Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Go ahead and call to the April 13th, 2015 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for being here inside with us in this room with no natural light on this beautiful day. We appreciate it. Before we move on to anything else really quickly, I need to report out from a closed session council had earlier today. Council authorized the local government insurance trust and their attorneys to take action in two pending legal matters. That was the results of our conversation. I need to also just ask that if anyone has a cellphone, if you don't mind turning it on silent or vibrate, and if you have an important call, if you could take it in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. If you haven't been with us before, emergency exits are out the door to your right and then right down to the stairwell. And there's a secondary exit out the door to your right and then left past the elevator. I'd now like to invite Associate Pastor Martin Wolf forward from the Living Stones Church to deliver the city invocation. Pastor Wolf?
I want to thank you for inviting me. So let's invite him. If everybody would just remain seated and bow their heads, please. Father God, we just thank you so much, Lord, that we perform the functions here, Father, ordained by you, Lord. Lord, we pray for godly wisdom in this room with each council member, the mayor, Father, all the employees, Father God. Lord, we also pray for blessings upon all the citizens of the city of Salisbury, Father God. And, Lord, we just pray for peace and safety within her borders, Father God. And we thank you and give you the glory in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Wolf. If you'll rise with me and recite the Pledge and Legions.
My pledge and allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a special proclamation this evening. Mayor Irtin, I'm going to ask you to come forward if you wouldn't mind to deliver this proclamation celebrating Shark Tank's return to Salisbury. ABC Shark Tank's return to Salisbury.
You want to come on up? Want to welcome Kathleen McLean from WMDT, or I'm sorry, 47ABC as it is now. And who's with you?
Kristy Weir from the Purdue School.
This is Dean Weir from the Purdue School.
Oh, my God. Well, my goodness, all right. Well, I just left the Purdue School, so it looks nice over there today.
Great.
There's lots of stuff going on. Well, this is a particularly great thing to happen in our city, and we have to thank the Purdue School and 47ABC for making it happen. So I have this proclamation that I have to read, and just to make it a little bit more fun for everybody, if you would please raise your right hand. That's right. And repeat with me, whereas?
Whereas.
Shark Tank is a critically acclaimed, unscripted, business-themed, reality show rating success that has breathed new life into the entrepreneurial spirit of America by offering a venue for entrepreneurs to present their ideas and business plans to investors who have the potential to offer lucrative business deals to those entrepreneurs chasing the American dream. And, everyone?
Whereas.
Shark Tank conducts a limited number of open casting calls each year, interviewing entrepreneurs for participation on the show. They first chose a partner to partner with Salisbury University's Franklin P. Purdue School of Business in the spring of 2014, and they are again partnering with the school this May to conduct one of the only five casting calls this year, and one of only two on the East Coast. And, everyone?
Whereas.
That's good. That rants. And whereas Shark Tank's popularity with the vast viewing public has increased entrepreneur awareness in local communities, which in turn helps boost local economies when new businesses provide jobs, and?
Whereas.
Shark Tank will be conducting an open casting call on Saturday, if you're watching on television, watch, write this down, on Saturday, May 9th, in Salisbury, Maryland, that is hosted by the local affiliate, 47ABC, Salisbury University's Purdue School of Business, and Maryland Capital Enterprises, our group from here in downtown. Now, therefore, I, James Irtin Jr., along with the City Council of Salisbury, Maryland, do hereby proclaim that day, May 9th, as Shark Tank Day in our city, in special recognition of Shark Tank's second open casting call in Salisbury, Maryland, and appreciation of the hosting organization's commitment to our community, and in full support of those entrepreneurs who will pursue their dreams. Madam Dean and Kathleen, thank you so much, and this is your day, May 9th.
Thank you.
Yep, there you go. I'm not about to change your office.
Wow, that was pretty elaborate. I wasn't expecting that.
It takes a lot of breath.
First of all, I just, well, thank you for getting back here in time, and thank you for the proclamation and the counsel. This is a moment when we can all be really, really proud of Salisbury. Last year, when we did this for the first time, we outperformed markets like Boston, some of the big guys that had the rights to this, and they invited us back this time. This time last year, one month before it started, we had one booked reservation for it. Today, we have over 60 booked for it, and we still have a month to go. So I don't know how many people are going to show up for this, but we're very excited, and it speaks so well about our community. And Jake, I want to thank you for something. You said something, oh, some time ago, we were chatting about this, you said, "Government can't do it alone. Private industry has to contribute to the downtown and to entrepreneurship." Well, we believe, and I say "we" because it's Kristy and I and our two organizations, believe that entrepreneurship, we share this vision, and it's entrepreneurship is the answer for growth in our market, and we're looking forward to having some homegrown geniuses grow their businesses here. So Shark Tank is really the third leg of the Triple Crown of entrepreneurship, and I'm going to let Kristy explain to you just what that means.
So I know this is a pitch tonight, we're pitching Shark Tank, but while we're here, I'm going to put just a plug in for a couple other events. So the week of May 4th is a pretty big week for us in the Purdue School. Starting in the Purdue School that Thursday, which is the 7th, we have our Shore Hatchery event, and some of you may have heard of Shore Hatchery, others may not have, but this will be our fourth go-around of Shore Hatchery, which is provided, funding provided by the Philippi and Carol Radcliffe Foundation. So Philip and Carol Radcliffe, the late Philip Radcliffe and his widow Carol, have a foundation to promote entrepreneurship. And so the Purdue School was given a grant of $1 million starting last year. It's a grant for $1 million over five years. So each year, we award $200,000 to local entrepreneurs. Some contestants are our students, others are entrepreneurs in the Salisbury community, even, you know, beyond the Salisbury community. So that competition will take place on Thursday, May the 7th. On Friday, May the 8th, will be our student entrepreneurship competition. That is a three-pronged contest that lasts all day. It's contestants that are part of the Purdue School of Business, as well as students throughout SU, but it is a student-based competition. And this year, we'll award $100,000, or we anticipate awarding $100,000 to our students in the form of cash and in-kind gifts, all because of our community sponsors. And the community sponsors, our alumni, have really come together to help us promote and foster entrepreneurship in our community, and so it's really an exciting time for us. The events will culminate in the Shark Tank casting call on Saturday. Those three events together are really an exciting time for us in the Purdue School, and we hope to work, continue to work with our community partners to promote entrepreneurship on the shore, to enhance the economic well-being and economic development of our area. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And Dean Weir and Ms. McLean, thank you for what you're doing to support these businesses. I just want to put it in context for a moment. The other cities, just looking at the website, the other cities this year are New York City, Oklahoma City, Minneapolis, Houston. It's just incredible that in this very small group of cities, that Salisbury is one of them, and a credit to both of you for attracting this program here. And then also to put it in context, 60, right now, and I know it'll be 180, 200, whatever it'll be, but that's at least 60 businesses.
Right.
Being started. At least 60 new businesses.
So I encourage you to help them find reasons to grow their businesses right here.
Thank you.
We don't want them to go anywhere.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented. All right, we have motion?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to move the award of bids at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Simply because Ms. Miller has informed us that the energy consultant cannot be here until later.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for an amendment to move the award of bids to the end of the agenda. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the amended legislative agenda, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion now to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion.
Did you vote on it?
Ms. Nichols? We did. Yep. The legislative agenda, we don't need to, we don't need to, we don't need to vote on the amendment itself, only on the legislative agenda movement. Okay, so I have a motion. Did I hear a second for the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a second. All right. Ms. Nichols.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda, we have the March 2nd and March 16th work session minutes, March 9th and March 23rd regular meeting minutes, resolution number 2490, authorizing the mayor to sign the Chop Tank Pinch Valve Agreement and authorizing a capacity fee credit not to exceed $35,000 against a total capacity fee of $38,863. And we have resolution number 2491 approving a service and equipment lease agreement between the city of Salisbury and the Waukesha County Board of Elections. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
So all those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Put me down as an abstention, please.
Okay, were you absent for some of those?
Yes, I was.
Okay. All right, Mr. Spees, abstains. Okay. All right, next item on our agenda is resolution number 2489. This is the adoption of the capital improvement plan. We'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2489.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay. And Ms. Glanz has left the room. All right. Well, you know, I can't present it myself. If I could, I would. Yeah, let's, can I?
I mean, I'll get up.
You want to read?
I could start.
And we, you know, it's obviously, we don't need the plan read, we just need a...
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Please don't read the plan.
Just a memo briefly. It says Chop Tank Electric is in the process of building a new facility on Wallston Switch Road.
Nope, that's not the...
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
2489, capital improvement plan, FY16, FY20.
Oh, I don't even have a copy of that. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right.
That one I was definitely not playing, going involved in.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to table it until the Assistant City Administrator returns. Are we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is second. All those in favor of tabling until the Assistant City Administrator returns, please signify as far as saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I abstain again.
Sorry about that. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2320 for first reading. This is the amendments to the Chapter 17 of the city code regarding non-conforming uses and adult entertainment uses. We'll also be conducting a public hearing on this tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2320. All right, have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All right, Mr. Tillman?
All right, this is an amendment to the adult entertainment section, the first one here of the zoning code. The primary provisions with regard to this, or what we're trying to do basically, is to lower the percentages of adult entertainment material from what was 20% down to a 15% threshold. There is a change in the definition of significant amount there, which includes both the percentage of stock in the establishment, as well as the floor and display area utilized for the display of adult material. And the last item that's being changed from 20 to 15% is the gross revenue of the business. So to the extent that the business generates 15% of its gross revenue from the sale of adult material, then the, it would be an adult entertainment or adult store. In addition, the non-conforming uses, previously, there are limits on the location of adult stores. They have to be, you know, more than 1,000 feet from churches, residences, et cetera. And the definition of non-conforming uses under 17.166.040 is that basically, again, is stating that the, they would be permitted to continue in existence in their current locations without conforming to that 1,000-foot limitation for up to two years from the date of the passage of the ordinance. After that, they would be compelled to conform. Under 17.166.090, inspection of premises, we've added there the right for the zoning enforcement officer to basically, well, I mean, I'll just read that, because this is all new language. "After the city receives a complaint about a business alleged to be in violation of the code regarding adult entertainment business, the city may inspect the place of business and financial records of such business. Inspections may also be initiated as a result of observations of city inspectors or as a result of a routine audit. The inspection shall occur after notice has been furnished to the owner and occupants of the place of business. The notice shall be sent by mail or by fixing the notice to the place of business in a conspicuous location. If the city's inspector shall be denied access to the financial records or place of business of any part or any part thereof that is appropriate for inspection, the inspectors may obtain an administrative search warrant." And then this ordinance also establishes the availability of an administrative search warrant in order to enforce this law, and then sets up the procedures of how one would be gotten. This pretty much follows the same procedures as appear elsewhere in the code, but it's being added here so it can specifically apply to the adult entertainment businesses. This particular proposal was sent by the council to the planning commission. The planning commission has reviewed the proposal and has recommended that it be approved.
Okay. All right. Yeah, are there questions from council before we open the public hearing?
No.
Shields, did you have something? Okay. All right, then what I'd like to do is go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm going to ask Ms. Nichols to swear anyone in who wishes to testify. If you wish to testify, just please stand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony here about the day of this conference...
I did. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah, would you come to the microphone and give your name and then your affiliation, then feel free to make your remarks.
Thank you. My name is Cynthia McDonald. I'm an attorney in Salisbury, and I represent B&amp;Z Investments, which is the owner of an adult retail, well, it's not an adult retail shop, a shop which is being targeted by this ordinance as an adult retail shop. And we have a few concerns with the ordinance. First, the, I think that the, after reading through the minutes of the work session the council held on this ordinance, during the workshop session, at least according to the minutes, it appears that the council wished to reduce the amount of usable floor space that could be allocated to certain types of merchandise that might be sold in these establishments. And then upon review of the language used by the city attorney in making that change, it became apparent that the change was much more significant than just changing the ordinance from reading that 20% of the usable floor area could be used to reducing it to 15% of the usable floor area being permitted for such use. The language actually was changed so that it's not now, the percentage is not now being applied to the usable floor area, but will be applied to the area used for display or storage of merchandise on the floor, walls, or vertical display area of the cabinets, shelves, or racks which rise from the floor, and it must be at least 15% of the area used for display or storage. So rather than measuring the total floor space of the building and then figuring out what percentage of it is allocated to certain types of merchandise, that language has been changed by the city attorney so that it is less easy to quantify what the total area is versus the area being used for the display of that merchandise. Because of that vagueness, I believe that this ordinance will be open to constitutional challenge. Moreover, the city attorney at the hearing before the planning and zoning commission conceded that this was not tried and true language that he pulled from a statute from another city that had been challenged. This was language that he created himself. Therefore, you know, making it unique language that hasn't been through any court system and hasn't been tested and approved by any court. Therefore, again, I think that lends even more credit to our argument that you're opening this statute up to constitutional challenge. Finally, we would point out that it's obvious that the statute was created to target one particular business that is located in the city of Salisbury. That particular business is not an adult-oriented business or an adult entertainment business, and it strives not to be, and it will continue to strive not to be, even under an amended ordinance as drafted. But we encourage the city council to consider this language carefully, and if there is a change, to review it carefully to make sure that it will meet constitutional challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Okay. Seeing no one else that wishes to be sworn in, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it to council. I'd like to make some remarks, unless there's something pressing from any other council member. Okay. I take issue, I appreciate your remarks, Ms. McDonald, but I take issue with the claim that this is designed to target one business. It's designed to target three businesses, and one of them is going out of business. So it's designed to target two businesses now. It absolutely is, and if there were more in the city, it would be designed to target exactly that many number of businesses. To suggest that the business that you're representing is not an adult entertainment business is, I find that hard to believe, given the name of that business and giving that there are images of, I'd say, 95% nude women in the windows of that business. So I hesitate to use any word "but" laughable at that assertion, and it's kind of frustrating that there would even be that claim made in this room. Regarding the city attorney's language, I appreciate that that's not tried and true, and I do think that the best language to use is language that has been tested in other communities. However, I would suggest that this language, which reads, the language to which you referenced, which reads, "At least 15% of the area used for the display or storage of merchandise on the floor, walls, or vertical display area of the cabinet, shelves, or racks which rise from the floor, or any combination thereof, which is at least 15% of the area used for display or storage," is pretty clear to me, and it covers really everything. And it means that anything that you can, the only thing that's missing is the ceiling. And if you could hang it from the ceiling, then that should be included, too. But I'm satisfied that the floors, the walls, the vertical display areas of cabinets, shelves, or racks is sufficiently descriptive. I have no problem with this. I think it covers everything it needs to cover, and I'll yield to other council members if they have any remarks to make.
Well, I won't make one comment.
Yes, Ms. Shields.
We've had adult stores in this community for years. I know over, I've been on since '81, and we had them in the '70s where illegal activity was being carried on. However, since the attorney brought up this concern of being challenged, I think we should take it seriously, which I do take it seriously, and that we make sure that it cannot be challenged. My personal opinion, this is my personal opinion, I don't even notice the store. You know, I don't notice the store. Don't offend me, but it offends other people, and that's what I have to consider. If you look at, open a catalog or go to Macy's or somewhere, and they have displayed lingerie and everything on the floor. Old ladies go in there, children go in there, and they look at the lingerie and whatever, to go to the parents. However, we're trying to, I guess the main street of Main Road, Route 13, is a concern. But I usually vote with the majority, and what's right for our community. I also believe that we should make sure, whatever we write, that will not be challenged, because personally, if I was in the business, I would challenge this. And if it's a question of that, if it could be challenged, we need to make sure we cannot be challenged.
Well, I think anything can be challenged.
Yeah.
And I think what's written...
Anything can be challenged, but you better make sure.
I think what's written is as clear and as plain English as I've ever seen.
I mean, it's clear here. It's clear, I guess it's clear, but you might challenge it.
Well, sure.
Yeah, you could challenge it.
But not on the basis of clarity. You wouldn't be successful. So the other, the other thing that I want to point out is that, you know, and Shani, thank you for bringing this up, is that, you know, this is a location issue, not a, you know, not a whether or not the business should exist. It can exist elsewhere in the city. It legally can exist in other parts of the city. So you're welcome to have your business in those parts of the city, just not where it is currently, and certainly not as it appears currently. And in fact, before the business was opened, we had that conversation, and some promises were made and broken, and that's unfortunate. So we have, any other comments from council?
I don't really like to say regarding the concept or the comment that this was not tried and true. I have to say that that applies to everything that's new and written from the ground up. So I have to give Mr. Tillman some credit for writing this legislation. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Shields?
I fully support the ordinance, and I believe it's the right thing to do for the citizens of our city.
Ms. Mitchell?
I apologize for being late, and I do have a couple of questions. I don't want to rehash everything, so I'm going to abstain tonight. This is first reading, correct?
Yeah, this is first reading.
So I'm going to abstain tonight, and I will get those questions answered.
Okay. Yep, it'll be back for second reading in two weeks. All right, anything else? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2320, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And Ms. Mitchell, you're noted as an abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2321, also for first reading. This is addressing definitions regarding the, in Chapter 5, regarding the adult entertainment ordinance. Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, this is the portion...
I'm sorry, Mr. Tillman. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2321?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Mr. Tillman?
All right, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, amend Salisbury Municipal Code, Section 5.08.010, definitions for the purpose of amending the definition of significant amount stating certain findings, providing for the application of the ordinance, and generally relating to adult entertainment business. And this particular ordinance is basically identical with some deletions to the prior ordinance. The code, as I indicated earlier, defines an adult entertainment business as the one with the 20% threshold, and this, using the same language as the prior ordinance, reduces it to 15%. The enforcement provisions are not necessary in this section of the code, because this section of the code is to be enforced by the police department. And so they would seek search warrants as necessary in the way they normally do. We don't have to create that.
All right. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2321, please signify your support by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
I'll abstain again.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2318. This is for second reading. This is eliminating primary elections. I'll entertain... Entertained a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-one-eight.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right. Mr. Tillman.
Okay, this ordinance number twenty-three-eighteen is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, amending sections one-point-oh-eight, point-oh-two-oh, duties of the election board, one-point-one-two, point-oh-three-oh, campaign contributions, and one-point-one-two, point-oh-four-oh, financial disclosure statements to be filed by the candidate or treasurer of the Salisbury Municipal Code to eliminate primary elections. And, you know, basically what we have are those sections set forth in there, you know, under one-point-oh-eight, point-oh-two-oh, the word "primary" is removed. The reference to the dollar limits for primary elections is removed under one-point-one-two, point-oh-three-oh. The language referring down under subsection C is taking out the language for both the primary and general elections, so we're only speaking of one election which is going to take place. One-point-one-two, point-oh-four-oh, financial disclosure statements, again, seven days prior to the primary election, is eliminated. We also, under one-point-one-two, point-oh-four-oh, subsection C, eliminate two references to the primary elections. And with those subtractions from the current law, it will just read with one election and no primary.
All right. Comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number two-three-one-eight, this is again for second reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number two-three-one-nine. This is amending also language regarding the elections in council manic districts. This is for second reading as well. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-one-nine.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
Okay, this ordinance is another, is a, basically a follow-up from the charter change that previously occurred, where we set up five council manic districts, and previously there were two. And so the language under one-point-oh-eight, point-three-zero-zero is going to eliminate the prior reference to two council manic districts and refer to the city shall have one council manic district per council member. That's it.
All right. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number two-three-two-two. This is for first reading. This is authorizing the bond obligation for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance two-three-two-two.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
All right, I'll just read from the general description. The attached ordinance authorizes the city to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight million dollars. The bonds will be used for the purpose of financing, reimbursing, or refinancing costs incurred in connection with the enhanced nutrient removal and biological nutrient removal upgrades. The project is funded through the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration at zero interest rate for over twenty, for a twenty-year term. This ordinance is being considered prior to the bid openings for the WWTB construction and the construction management inspection contract in order to meet deadlines for approvals to the award contracts. The maximum amount of thirty-eight million dollars is estimated by including a five percent contingency to the original loan request of thirty-six million, four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. The estimated total project cost, including construction, preliminary engineering, corrective action plan, engineering design, construction management, and inspection, is sixty-eight million, six-hundred-seventy-nine thousand dollars. In addition to the bonds, the funded preliminary engineering, MDE, grants in the estimated amount of twenty-eight million, three-hundred thousand will cover the rest of the projected costs.
And with this action, a decade and a half-long saga of a wastewater treatment plant build, rebuild, and ultimate brand-new construction begins to come to an end. And that's a pretty good feeling. Are there?
There, it's these hairs.
Yes, those gray hairs.
There they are, right in there.
Are there questions or comments from council?
Hallelujah.
Okay, one comment, hallelujah. Others? All right. Again, this is first reading, so we'll see this again in a couple of weeks, but at this point in time, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next item on our agenda is ordinance two-three-two-two, for first reading. This is a reallocation, a restructure of the ordinance authorizing the TIF bonds for the public roads on the idlet property or associated with the idlet property. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance two-three-two-three.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
The ordinance will have the effect of restructuring the idlet property TIF bonds. Skymark Real Estate Investors LLC has agreed to develop the tax sale properties if the original series two thousand and seven bonds can be restructured. Council was briefed and reached unanimous consensus to advance the legislation during its March sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen work session. This ordinance was prepared by the city's bond council. If you'd like, I'll read the introduction, but not, I'm happy.
It's online.
All right.
Ms. Tillman, you don't need to read the introduction.
No, I see, I got that information.
I just wanted to make sure you got that.
I did.
And there's nothing else?
That's it.
Okay. I thought you were waiting for confirmation.
That's it.
All right. Any comments or questions from council?
No.
Hearing none. Speaking of the ends of sagas, all right, all those in favor of ordinance two-three-two-three, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number two-three-two-four, for first reading, approving a budget amendment for replacement radio batteries. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance two-three-two-four.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
Okay. Two-three-two-four is an ordinance requesting surplus funds for the purpose, excuse me, for the purchase of replacement batteries for the Salisbury Police Department portable radios issued to our sworn personnel. SPD officers have been experiencing shorter battery charges. The average shift of a patrol is twelve hours. On a full charge, an increasing number of radio batteries are not lasting a full shift. The current batteries were purchased about four years ago and are out of warranty. The replacement batteries are sole purchase from Motorola and Salisbury Police Department is requesting to purchase one replacement for each police officer for a total of one-hundred two batteries. Batteries for newly hired officers with new radios and those other officers who have not yet experienced problems will be held and reserved by the quartermaster's office until such time as they are needed. The cost of one-hundred-two radio batteries is ten thousand, eight-hundred-sixty-three dollars.
Okay. Are there comments or questions from council? I understand this was heard while I was away.
Yes.
My only question is, and perhaps this was discussed, but my only question is, and do we have, Captain, I'm looking at you. Is this something that could wait for the new fiscal year, for July one? If not, you know, I understand, I'd like to just understand why.
During a course of duty, they do lose charge on their batteries, and the signals cannot reach them, and they don't have enough spare batteries and money now to furnish the officers with.
Okay, just to repeat for the microphone, so this is something that's needed now because the issue is relatively immediate, and this is something that is being requested to be addressed immediately.
Yes, it's a safety issue.
And that it's a safety issue, okay.
Question, yes, quick question. How many would be put in reserve, do you figure, based on your comment?
Yeah, do you, would you mind coming to the microphone? I apologize for not asking you to do that early. Thank you.
You said there was an immediate need, and then there was some the quartermaster was going to hold.
Right, just for the officers that weren't experiencing the problem.
And how many would that be roughly?
I could not advise.
Okay, so I was wondering if we could.
Right.
Take care of the ones that we know we need now, and then hold off on maybe a smaller amount, then with the next budget.
What, or was, I think we, didn't we discuss or ask this question, it was a bulk price or something? It was something, maybe Ms. Miller knows. See what you get for leaving the room? The pricing on the batteries, we were talking about how many needed to be used, put to use right away, and how many would be stored. Was there a bulk pricing on this, because we're buying so many?
I haven't seen any information regarding it yet.
Okay.
I think we asked, Colonel Monchine about that.
Okay.
I can follow up. It should be in our minutes.
May I?
Yeah, Ms. Heath.
Is four years about the average for expected life for this piece of equipment?
It depends on the usage.
On how many times it's recharged, yeah.
Right. Some officers only work an eight-hour shift, but the majority works twelve hours, and those are the ones that the battery dies sooner.
Has anybody contacted Motorola to ask if this is within the guideline, within normal limits?
Yes, Colonel Monchine has.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm inclined to suggest that, given that we've got the full request in front of us, rather than amending that request, that we consider voting on this, but if there's an alternative path, I'm open to it. If we would prefer an alternative path, I'm open to that.
Yeah, I'm willing to do this. I think the thing is, you don't know when it's going to fail.
Right.
If you don't have the extras there, then we're back to another. It might make it till June or July first, it might not.
No, I'm not suggesting, but if it was, if there were.
Half.
Half of them.
Half, yeah.
Then I'd say, well, you take a quarter, and then you, but we don't know the information. I don't want to put the place in jeopardy, so.
Right. And then, you know, perhaps just as a budgeting guideline, perhaps we can budget for a quarter every year and cycle them. All right. For future reference.
It's in our minutes that we discussed, and I'm looking at it now.
Do you have the?
I have the minutes. Captain Monchine reported that over the past several months, they've received complaints from patrol officers that radio batteries in their portable units have been failing and not making it through the whole shift. The batteries were purchased about four years ago and are out of warranty. Officer experienced an increasing number of failures with the batteries, and although expensive, they must be replaced. Old ones could be spares as they are still chargeable, just don't hold their charges very long. And that's why I believe that, it says, they would like to replace the four hundred and two batteries out of the general surplus, so we begin a hundred and two batteries for that amount of money, from my understanding.
Okay, so no further insight on council's thinking at the time. All right, with that, go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of ordinance two-three-two-four, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda, thank you, Captain. Next item on the agenda is ordinance two-three-two-five, for first reading. This is appropriating funds to outfit the police department tactical team with additional fire retardant gear, optics, and illumination, and would like to entertain a motion to approve ordinance two-three-two-five for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
Whereas the Salisbury Police Department tactical team are in need of upfitting of fire retardant gear, weapons, optics, illumination, and storage containers, and whereas deployment of these safety measures and gear will greatly enhance the officer's, the officer and public safety while deducing, while reducing, I should have called that before, reducing liability on the city of Salisbury, and whereas Salisbury Police Department is requesting the purchase of this gear, which will cost approximately fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, that city's fiscal year two thousand and fifteen general fund budget speed camera subaccount be amended as follows. Increase in the general fund revenue of fourteen thousand, five hundred, increase in the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
All right. Can that be an editorial?
Yes.
Change?
Clearly.
Though they may also be able to deduce liability, but.
Why don't we do it as a motion?
It's fine. I think that can be an editorial, just change the D to an R. All right. You know, it strikes me that this is probably something that typically could be done through the budgeting process rather than as a budget amendment, but this is certainly something I'd like to see purchased as well, so I'm supportive of the purchase. And I realize that additional funding appears in the speed camera subaccount than is anticipated at the beginning of the year, and that the department likes to, and understandably, spend it on the things that it wished to include in the budget in the first place, but something to think about.
If I could, I had that same thought. I always go to that, well, is this something that we didn't know about in the budgeting process or should know about the next time? And there was something, I cannot remember at this moment what it was, but when we heard this, there was something that made this pop up.
Okay.
It wasn't like the firemen's flame retardant gear, turnout gear we know every ten years it expires.
Right.
There was something different about this one.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts, comments? Mr. Heath?
No, I concur with your, with your comments.
Okay. All right, for future reference then. But I'm supportive of the acquisition, I'm supportive of this gear and SPD's tactical team having it, ensuring that they have the most up-to-date fire retardant weapons optics, elimination, storage containers, gear that they can possibly get their hands on. So with that, if there are no other comments, call the question. All those in favor of ordinance two-three-two-five, again for first reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number two-three-two-six, an oldie but a goodie for first reading. This is the ECV Alarm Dispatch Notification System ordinance. Thank you, Captain. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance two-three-two-six.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All right, Mr. Tillman.
All right, this ordinance establishes the system for setting up the fees and the fines with regard to false alarms, and it also provides for the enhanced call verification and the ability of an individual to opt out of enhanced call verification. There's been much discussion about this. It's been read a number of times. We tried to incorporate all of the council's most recent recommended changes in this version. If anybody has any specific questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Well, I want to thank the administration, the city attorney, council members, the public, the chamber, Mr. Bolts from the large engineering and everything, anyone I'm forgetting, mom and dad back home, for everything they've done to get this ordinance updated and to get it to a point where it is acceptable to both the alarm industry as well as to the potential violators, I guess, of the false alarm ordinance, and most importantly, to our first responders. And I think we've gotten as close as we can get to that. So are there any comments or questions?
At the risk of being redundant, how will you?
All right.
I fully support it, it's a long time coming.
It is, indeed. All right, with that, all those in favor of ordinance two-three-two-six, again for first reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
I pointed that one out, that it's for first reading, just so everyone knows that there's still time to undo that.
But please don't.
Yes, but please don't. But please don't. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number two-three-two-seven. This is for first reading. This is the sister ordinance, updating the false alarm fees associated with the ordinance that was just passed. I entertain a motion to approve ordinance two-three-two-seven.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All right, Mr. Tillman.
All right, whereas the city of Salisbury has a false alarm ordinance and desires to update fees associated with false alarm response by the city police department and Salisbury Fire Department, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, in accordance with Title VIII Health and Safety Section eight-point-oh-four, point-oh-five-oh-A of the city code, that the fee schedule be amended as follows. And the original schedule basically is just deleted as it appeared, and the new fee schedule provides basically zero fee for the first and second offense under both police and fire, or the second call. For the third false alarm, it's a forty dollars for the police, forty-five for the fire company, for the, excuse me, third, it was forty and forty-five, fourth is eighty and ninety, and the fifth, and each subsequent false alarm in a calendar year is going to be one-twenty for the police and one-thirty-five for the fire department. The previous ordinance also added to that a fine if you went over the five times, and that was set forth in the prior ordinance.
And I just want to note how accommodating both Chief Duncan and Chief Hoppus have been here, and really, I think, if I can say this, how accommodating the mayor and council have been on this. I want to clarify what's happened here. So now that five-hundred-dollar fine, I believe it was, Mr. Tillman, that five-hundred-dollar fine for violating the fifth subsequent false alarm fee in a given period, twelve- or twenty-four-month period, that fine doesn't kick in until you've violated the false alarm ordinance five times, and. And rather than recover the cost of the, of providing the service as we could on the first fee, or on the first response, we don't do it for the first, we don't do it for the second, we only take a third on the third, we only take two-thirds on the fourth, and we don't actually recover costs until that fifth subsequent violation within that calendar year. So I think this is most accommodating. I appreciate everyone finding that sort of resolution, and I don't think we should hear any complaints about this. He said attempting to make sure there weren't any complaints on this. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, just, the fines are one thing, but I, let's not forget the reason behind the fines. Every time our men and our equipment leave the barn, the, I'm sorry, leave the firehouse, they, they could potentially be putting their lives in jeopardy, even on the way to a fire. And that's really what we want to do. We want to make sure that they're safe and protected. And if this encourages people to take care of their alarm system, then it's doing its job. Thank you.
I agree, that this, that's the whole point of this fee and fine system, is to make sure that we're safe and the other people that may actually have a need that aren't responded to as quickly because someone's on a false alarm, whether it be police or fire. It is an encouragement to make sure that you fix any problems you have with your alarm so that we are not expending resources where they're not needed, so they're available where they are needed. And that's the only point to this, is it's not, there's no other reason for it, that's it. So please, work with your alarm system company and make sure that you tell your guests when they're there to, what the code is and how to use it, and to be careful about it. And things do happen, and that's why we gave you a grace of two alarms within a year. Beyond that, maybe you need to do a little bit of training.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance 2327 for first reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we're gonna go back to the first tabled item, which was the Resolution Number 2489, adopting a capital improvement plan for FY '16 to FY '20. We didn't have a representative of the administration in the room, so I'd like to invite Ms. Glanz, who, by the way, is our new Assistant City Administrator. Welcome, Ms. Glanz.
Thank you.
I believe you have a week under your belt, is that correct?
A week and a day.
A week and a day, excellent. Well, welcome to Salisbury City Government, although I know Salisbury is not new to you. I'm going to ask that we get a motion again. I know we did have a motion a second, but I want to get a motion again. All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Glanz?
Good evening. Again, this is Resolution 2489, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, adopting a capital improvement plan for the five-year period of FY '16 through '20. Whereas it is important for the city to develop a short-range plan showing its capital outlay needs and setting forth a plan for financing those needs, and whereas the development of such a plan helps to ensure the city, that the city's short-range capital needs are being addressed in a responsible manner, helps to place those needs in a priority order, and helps anticipate the resources that will be available to finance those needs. And whereas the city staff has developed the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year '16 and ending in fiscal year '20, and whereas the city council has reviewed the attached capital improvement plan and finds that it reflects the capital needs of the city as can best be reasonably anticipated, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Salisbury, the city council adopts the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year '16 and ending in fiscal year '20, be it further resolved that since the attached capital improvement plan is intended to be a planning document only, that the adoption of this plan does not authorize any project, nor does it appropriate any funds.
Thank you.
And I will yield any questions to Mr. Corddry, patiently waiting.
All right, excellent. Are there any questions or comments?
Just one comment on page two, if this, just in case this is used for the current year budget as well, there's some names misspelled on page two. Change those.
Yep. Some important names.
Yeah, a little bit. Maybe curious. Mayor Arton's last name is missing a letter, and the city administrator's name is missing a letter.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll want to make sure those are updated. Okay, without any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2489, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good to have that plan in place, and thank you, Ms. Glanz.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. The next item on our agenda was the award of bids, which was moved to the end of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adopt the award of bids.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Good evening. We have several fun things tonight on the agenda. The first item is the award of bid for Contract 10715, the Salisbury wastewater treatment plant BNR ENR upgrade. The city of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Department of Public Works to solicit bids for Contract 107-15. This project will complete the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant as identified in the wastewater treatment plant corrective action plan developed by Brown and Caldwell in June 2010, the vendor that has been providing the engineering services for the project. Due to the complexity of this project, it was bid under a two-step procurement process, technical qualifications and pricing. Thus, the first step was for the city to issue a request for qualifications in October of 2014. This was a technical qualifications portion of the request. The city received nine proposals, all of which were reviewed by both the city and Brown and Caldwell. Two were rejected due to nonconformity with the requirements stated in the RFQ, and the seven remaining contractors were determined to be pre-qualified to bid on Contract 107-15. These seven contractors were supplied with the bid documents, final plans and specifications for Contract 107-15, wastewater treatment plant BNR ENR upgrade. Of the seven contractors that were pre-qualified, four returned a bid by the due date and time of March 12, 2015, at 2:30 PM. Yuleman Shute Construction in the amount of $50,150,000, PC Construction in the amount of $50,866,000, Frucan in the amount of $51,299,000, and Clark Construction in the amount of $60,628,321. Yuleman Shute Construction was the apparent low bidder. After a thorough review of the proposals by Brown and Caldwell, the engineer of record for the project, and the Department of Public Works, Yuleman Shute was determined to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. At the time of this writing, the bids and bidding procedures are being reviewed by the Maryland Department of the Environment and the Maryland Board of Public Works. The cost of this project will be funded by two grants, the Bay Restoration Fund ENR Grant and the Biological Nutrient Removal Grant in the amount of $25,800,000, and a 0% interest loan from the Maryland Department of the Environment with a not-to-exceed amount of $38,000,000. The procurement department requests council's approval to award Contract 107-15 wastewater treatment plant BNR ENR upgrade to Yuleman Shute Construction in the amount of $50,150,000. At this time, I would like to ask Amanda Pollak to come up and answer any questions that she may have, along with give you an overview of the funding and introduce Yuleman Shute to you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Pollak?
Thank you. We have some important team members in the audience with us today. I first wanted to introduce our wastewater treatment plant staff that's here. Al Porianda is the wastewater treatment plant superintendent.
Can you bring him up to the podium so everybody can see?
Sure. And Doug Ayersman is the Assistant Wastewater Treatment Plant Superintendent. The staff at the wastewater treatment plant has been integral in this process, has been involved in every single design meeting, and we've had weeks and weeks of design meetings with Brown and Caldwell, and they have done an excellent job reviewing the plans and specs thoroughly along with the engineering department staff, so that they are sure they're going to know how to operate this project and, and that it's going to function the way they're anticipating it. So I'm glad to have them here with us tonight. Additionally, from Yuleman Shute, we have Will Little here, and he's available to answer any questions you have about their company. Very briefly, Yuleman Shute is based out of Ohio, they have a satellite office in Rockville, Maryland, and they specialize in water and wastewater projects. That's all they do, is water and wastewater treatment. When we pre-qualified the contractors, we looked at everything from projects that they've done, we called references, we looked at their financial stability and their state, safety records. So Yuleman Shute is more than qualified to build this project. I also wanted to give you just a little bit more background on the funding and where we're going from here. Jennifer mentioned some of the numbers. For Yuleman Shute's contract in particular, the $50,150,000, the grant eligibility is right around 42%. To be precise, in MDE terms, it's 41.685% grant eligible. So that translates for their $50 million contract, $20,900,000 are grants. The remaining, about $29,200,000 and change is a loan. And as Jennifer mentioned, it's a 0% interest loan. There's also $1.5 million of principal forgiveness. Tonight, you had first reading on the ordinance to set the maximum loan amount. In May, I'll be back here presenting to you to have a resolution that sets the actual loan amount. Right now, the overall project cost, everything included, including design and construction services, is now at about $64,350,000. So it's a little bit less than what we read earlier tonight, thinking that we were going to be in the $68 million range. We were very successful in getting good bids. Our engineer's estimate was $54 million. We were very pleased with how the bids came in. And our overall loan now is looking at, to be around $36,050,000. So a little bit less than what we passed tonight, so we will set that firm number with a resolution in May.
Okay, a couple, couple of questions, and, and some comments. The, the total project amount being sixty, I'm sorry, 64...
$64,350,000.
$64,350,000. Some of that is design costs that have already been spent.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the, the maximum amount of the grant plus loan figures that you've read, is what, $63 million total, the 25 and 38?
Yeah, so some, yeah, that's exactly right. There's about $2.5 million of bond money that was already spent or to be spent, that, that's separate.
Okay, all right, so presumably, based on what I'm hearing and given that there are, you know, some costs, there, there are costs that we've already expended, we won't need all of that 38 million, other than potentially for contingencies and things like that. Is that correct?
Well, yes.
Is that your assumption?
Yes, and built into these numbers that I've read is 5% of contingency and 3% for administrative costs.
Okay.
MDEs allows that right off the bat. So, so that is built into everything we're talking about tonight as far as grant and loan overall amounts.
Okay. To the gentleman from the wastewater treatment plant. First of all, thank you for your input on this and for managing what is, you know, with Ms. Pollak and Mr. Bolz, what is undoubtedly the biggest capital project that this city has ever taken on and probably, hopefully, will be for a long time. And I'm, I say that with a sense of, those words may have been spoken or something like them a few years ago when we, when we built a wastewater treatment plant once, but it's reassuring to know the efforts that have gone into making sure that this is done right and done well. So I applaud you and thank you for your service to the city, especially given the scale and scope of this project. So thank you.
Thank you.
The, the other question that I had was just in regard to our, our new partner in the project. Yuleman, I'm sorry, Yuleman Shute? Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ullman, I'm sorry, I heard Yuleman, Ullman. All right, well, well, thank you, thank you for being here. The, I guess the question that I would have, if you don't mind coming forward, would be, you know, given your experience in wastewater treatment plants and in water projects and wastewater projects, can you, can you just give us a sense of, in that portfolio, where we fall in? Is this one of the bigger, one of the smaller, or right in the middle?
Probably about in the middle. Our biggest size project we've ever completed is probably about $110 million. We've done several in that size range, we've done some 70 to 80, 50s running around in the middle. We go down all the way to maybe even half a million dollars, but 50's pretty comfortable size for us.
Two other questions. The, the fact that we're dealing with partial rebuild, you know, using some existing assets, is that something that you have experience with as well?
Absolutely. Most, probably 90% or more of our contracts are rebuilds in existing plants, so we're fully aware of the need to keep the plant operational while we're doing all of our work, and the upsets to the plant could result in permit violations and things like that. So that's, it's right up our alley, that's where we'll have it.
And speaking of permits, my guess is that, given that you have a Rockville office, you've worked in Maryland before, so you're familiar with MDE, and you've worked with them and worked under their thumb before?
Absolutely. We've done work in city of Baltimore, Howard County, Washington, WSSE, Washington Sanitary Suburban Commission, pretty much all over.
Okay. Anything on the eastern shore before?
This would be the first foray into the eastern shore. We've done Anaral County before, but we've never crossed the bridge to the former.
This is the first phase to permit on the shore. Any other questions or comments from council?
I just want to say, since I was behind the table when the first base was a treatment plant, and I had no idea what went into it, but I was happy to see with the, our superintendents or being part of the planning stage, where they can be have hands-on right from the beginning and actually understand what's going on once it's built. I think you can, you know, you could be there to ask questions, something you don't understand. And I appreciate also the engineering consultant firm that we had, because when they made presentations, they put it in layman's terms so we could understand what was going on.
Yeah, thank you, Brown and Caldwell.
Yeah, thank them also, because I think that was a big asset for us, too, to make the right decision moving forward.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Mitchell, to Justice. Tillman? All right. Well, thank you all, and thank you for taking the time to be here with us this evening.
No problem, no problem.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Okay.
I do have one question for Ms. Miller, though.
Yes.
I'm always curious when I see cluster of bids and one outlier. Any comment on that, that difference or what?
Amanda could answer that better than I could when they, when they get into the pricing proposal of it. All right, the second item this evening is the change order number eight to Contract RFP 02-10, the wastewater treatment plant engineering services. The city of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Department of Public Works to process change order number eight in the amount of $3,182,000 for Contract RFP 02-10, wastewater treatment plant engineering services. This change order will provide for Brown and Caldwell's services during the construction and warranty period of the wastewater treatment plant BNR ENR upgrade. Additional details regarding these services, which are tasks number 37 through 53, are noted in the department memo, which is attached. Funds for this change order are contingent upon approval and receipt of the grant and loan funds as part of the funding package from the Maryland Department of the Environment for the wastewater treatment plant BNR ENR upgrade. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number eight, as noted above, to Brown and Caldwell in the amount of $3,182,000.
I have one question. Makes perfect sense to me for Brown and Caldwell to be retained for these services throughout the construction. Just wondering if this could have been anticipated as an add, you know, add alternate somewhere else in the process, or if this was the only sort of mechanism we had, the change order was the only mechanism we had to addressing this? And even if it was, maybe it wouldn't be necessary at this stage to make that decision?
And that, that's really where we are. Brown and Caldwell contracted with the city in 2009, and at that time, it was for the corrective action plan and then the preliminary engineering report. So at that time, we weren't even totally clear on what they were going to design. So their design work was also a change order a couple of years ago, and, and now this is the next step. And we even chose not to do this when we did the design change order a couple of years ago because we wanted to get closer to construction, make sure we knew exactly how long the contract was going to be for and that we knew all the specifics, so they could give us a very specific proposal. specific proposal. I do want to mention that this proposal from Brown and Caldwell is coupled with our construction management and inspection services contract. MDE, when you use their funding, requires you to bid that as separate services. So Brown and Caldwell is not the inspector on the project. At the next legislative meeting, you'll have before you the award of bids for the construction management inspection services contract. So those two complement each other. Brown and Caldwell is doing all the technical review, all the shop drawings, requests for information, that type of thing. We'll have a separate firm that actually has two inspectors on site full-time and is managing the construction contract. So these go hand in hand.
I'm not 100 percent clear on, and I don't mean this in a pejorative way, I'm just curious, on why the construction manager is the inspector, and maybe it's, I just, maybe I just don't understand a project like this, but why a construction manager of the project has inspection roles as well?
So that is, it's funded through construction services through the state, and that construction manager is responsible for overseeing the schedule and all work that's being done on site. So that's our third-party eyes on the site essentially, and the third-party reviewer. So they are the owner's representative, and they're our number-one representative. And we contract directly with them, and then we contract directly with Brown and Caldwell. But it is typical for that, that firm to provide inspection services.
Okay. Okay. So you have an owner, we have an owner's rep, we have a construction manager who's also providing inspection services, because that's what essentially the state requires us to do when using their money.
That's right. And he really is the owner's rep. So he will, they will work on a daily basis with both Ullman Shooty and with the wastewater treatment plant staff. So we'll have bi-weekly scheduling meetings, we'll have monthly progress meetings. They run all of those meetings, pre-construction meetings, you know, they'll develop the punch list when, when we're close to being complete, and they monitor every test. And that company actually will do all of the testing. The soils testing, concrete testing, any special inspections is all handled through our construction manager. Brown and Caldwell is here to do everything technical. They'll do our training, they'll do our programming, all of our standard operating procedures, and all of the technical aspects of it, then coupled with that construction firm.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, Amanda. In terms of project management tools, you guys, do you guys, what do you guys use?
Well, we use Microsoft Project.
Okay.
But we did ask the construction manager to propose what they would like to use, because they are in charge of document control, and it has to be electronic.
Right.
So I believe they were using a Primavera software.
Okay.
Which we will have access to web-based, where we didn't have to buy that software. But that was a key component in that proposal. And so shop drawings will be submitted electronically, and you'll see the flow of all documents electronically through that site.
All right. Another question. When you're doing your, your development of this project, and I know that I'm going back a couple of years, was this identified as a cost in that time?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And the council was made aware of it at that time?
Yes, yes, absolutely. This was fully expected to be a change order at that time.
Okay.
Yes.
And the project, things work?
Yes.
It was more, wasn't it, Amanda?
Actually, it was more. This is where the actual prices came in, and as I said, in two weeks, you'll see where the actual construction management company came in as far as the bids. But, but yes, these costs were projected, but we didn't have the actual proposals.
That's good.
Two questions. One, about the lawsuit proceeds, those are being used for other projects, lift stations and things like that, right?
That's correct.
Because we have this lump sum funding for this project.
That's correct, yes.
Are there anything, is there anything else that we anticipate, since there is extra money in this actual wiggle room, in this bond, that those lawsuit proceeds won't cover?
Right now, the, the way the lawsuit proceeds were laid out in the fiscal year 15 budget, we were funding three pump stations and a portion of the well at Paleo, and we still had a little bit less than a million dollars that was unspecified out of those litigation proceeds. So that, right now, in my mind, is additional contingency. As you know, we have the north side and south side pump station upgrades under contract right now. We'll, we'll have this soon, and we only have 5 percent contingency built in. So at this point, we don't have that earmarked for anything, and we're just kind of holding on and seeing how things go.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, that weren't additional projects we weren't aware of that needed to be done, but weren't funded. And the other thing is the, and I'm only asking this again because of prior history and the way things went before, our rep, the construction manager, do you have meetings with them one-on-one without the other participants?
Yes, yes. And, and we can talk in more specifics. I have to be vague, because that award of bids in two weeks, but yes, we will. We'll have a chartering meeting with them before we ever meet with the contractor with them, and we will meet with them on a regular basis. They will meet with the operators on a daily basis and get their needs. Doug will be the point of contact for operations during construction, and so he will be integral in meeting with the construction management on a, on a daily basis. So yes, they, they are our main representatives, so we will meet with them individually very often.
Thank you.
Also, referring to the project which shall not be named, do we have discussion about liability limits in our contracts?
We require certain insurances, liability insurances from the vendor, plus there's also performance bid bond and then performance bonds as well.
Because I think, when we were going through our litigation previously, over the last few years, the, the contracts regarding liability were woefully inadequate, and we really got burned. And I don't think we should do that again, so.
We did look at it this time. We did increase the amount of insurance that we required for this contract, plus the performance bond is 100 percent of the contract amount.
Excellent, thank you.
What's the term of the performance bond? Just during construction, or is there a period after?
And does it include the warranty?
During, and then it'll be a separate maintenance bond?
That's right.
Okay.
Good.
Excellent question. Mr. Spies?
Other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, I did want to back up as well. The question that you asked me on the RFP 1015 about why that one vendor was maybe so different, we do have the bid tab, I just don't have it with me this evening. And I can provide that to you, but there was maybe 17 or 20 line items, so I just don't remember in which categories they might have been outstanding.
Yeah, I understand. It's a huge project. I didn't expect you to know that. Although you've probably been looking at it so much, but no, I didn't expect you to know that.
Okay, very good. The next item this evening on the award of bid is for RFP 07-15, net aggregate metered alternative site solar photovoltaic or wind turbine electric generating system. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the mayor and the administration to solicit bids for RFP 07-15. This project requested proposals from an alternative energy provider that would afford a host site which qualifies for net aggregate metering of designated city utility accounts. The city followed standard procurement practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, and on eMaryland Marketplace. A total of four vendors submitted bids, which were reviewed by the city and the city's energy consultant, Richard Anderson. Two of the four technical proposals were determined to be viable for consideration, and these two vendors were given an invitation to interview. SolarCity and Sun Edison were interviewed on February 24th, and both were then ranked on a scale of zero to four, according to the evaluation criteria established in the RFP. SolarCity received a score of 2.60, Sun Edison received a score of 3.80. The evaluation concluded that the Sun Edison proposal offer met the technical requirements of the request for proposal, that the site appears to have the capacity of the Delmarva service to accept the solar power, the solar energy generated at the site, and the price offered in the power purchase agreement is financially beneficial on a long-term basis for the City of Salisbury, estimated at 3,722,000 kilowatts to be generated in year one. While the project at this stage appears to be viable, it is contingent upon Delmarva Power interconnection approval. We estimate that this project has an 85 percent or greater chance of success. The proposal offered a 15-year PPA of seven and a half cents and a 20-year PPA of six and a half cents per kilowatt. The mayor and the administration wished to enter into a 20-year PPA at a power purchase rate of six and a half cents per kilowatt for the first five years, with a 2 percent escalation or increase in years six through 20. The rate at the end of the term will be eight and, eight, how do you say, eight and three-quarter cents? Additionally, the city will also receive a Delmarva delivery and distribution credit at approximately 1.6 cents per kilowatt. The total projected energy savings over a 20-year period through this net aggregate meter scenario is $1,366,578. The procurement department requests council's approval to award this contract to Sun Edison Standard Solar in the form of a 20-year power purchase agreement at six and a half cents per year for the first five years, with a 2 percent escalation in year six through 20.
Questions best directed to Ms. Pollak?
No.
To you?
Either myself and Mr. Richard Anderson is here as well.
Excellent. Thank you. So, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Miller, thank you for being here with us this evening. Mr. Anderson, couple questions. One, have we spoken to Delmarva Power in, you know, even an early conversation so far?
The vendor has.
The vendor?
Yes.
Okay. And that is the basis of our 85, estimate of 85 percent or greater chance of success?
Correct.
Okay. The total project savings, or the total project power generation, the 3,722,000 kilowatt hours, do we know what percentage of our annual consumption that is, approximately?
It's approximately 15 percent of the annual total consumption.
It's approximately 15 percent of the annual total consumption?
For all accounts within the city portfolio.
For all, okay, for all city accounts?
That are Delmarva accounts.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. It's approximately 15 percent of the total energy consumption for our Delmarva accounts.
And I ask that question to, you know, try to get a sense of why in the world we wouldn't try to get to 100 percent. I mean, this is an incredible savings over 20 years for our citizens, you know, in a very, very large category of our expenses, so, you know, I think it's, I think it's fantastic. Do we have a sense of where the site is? Do they have to identify the site for us?
Yes.
Can you, can you talk about the site just a little bit?
I, I don't want to mention the name of the landowner right now.
Okay, that's fine, but if you can give a geographic description?
Worcester County, off of 113.
Okay.
What we would do is we would, it would be considered a remote location. The vendor would lease the site from the landowner. We would put a host meter at the site.
Right. Okay.
Question?
Yeah, other questions?
Yeah. The savings that you, you calculated are obviously based against a projection of what the cost would be from, directly from Delmarva over that same time period, correct?
Using a standard market rate.
Right.
And then also figuring in that delivery credit as well. So there's, there's kind of two savings. There's the savings that you would get from the normal rate versus this rate we would buy the solar at, and then we also get a delivery credit.
Do you know what that rate was at the end of the period?
The market rate right now is about eight and a half percent, eight and a half cents, I'm sorry.
And what was the projection for, say, 15 years?
Well, we use an, again, an escalator.
Right.
It's 10.
Oh, okay.
It's 10.08 cents would be the escalator on the Delmarva side. That includes delivery and distribution, what we call fully bundled cost, because we're really offsetting fully bundled cost savings. The majority of the savings would be coming from the credit that we will receive from the delivery and distribution. If the market were to continue to go up, our savings would increase. So we used a very conservative scale number to begin with for the, for the supply portion of the energy costs.
Has the trend been that power delivery costs are rising as, you know, as all costs seem to be? I assume so, but I don't know for sure.
It's very similar to the airline business. The commodity is low, but the fees around the commodity are the increase. We have some, we have a national client that we just did an assessment nationwide, regulated and deregulated locations, there's a 6.7 percent increase just on the regulated delivery and distribution cost. In Maryland, we saw a, a 6 percent. Here in Delmarva, BGE had a 7 and a half percent. Potomac Edison had a 4 and a half percent. It's going to continue on in that process for that, for the delivery and distribution, the, the regulated portion of the bill.
Questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jack?
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering about the amount of, you had asked about why wouldn't we shoot for 100 percent, and I think part of it might be citing space available for the panels. Are you doing pretty much like Purdue, the panels at Purdue? Is that the kind of solar field that you're looking?
Yes, ma'am. On the actual scale, and it'll look very similar to the one at Purdue that we can see by the, but the, here's the, the real issue is, the net aggregate metering law requires the site not to be more than what they call two megawatts, or 2,400 kilowatts of power per location. If we were to build another one, we'd have to go through the same process and develop another field at some other site. This was an ambitious, a kind of forward-thinking idea. We were happy to see one, two-megawatt location that seems to be technically viable. Obviously, over time, if we could get four of these, it would be ambitious, but I think we've made the biggest strides we can to see if the process will work. So it's more a regulatory limitation than any, anything else.
Well, and my, and my question was, my question was not sarcastic, but it really was to suggest that we look to be ambitious over time.
Yeah, no, I didn't take yours as sarcastic, and that's where I was going, I was following exactly where you were going with, how much space are we talking to get this proportion?
You need about 10 acres.
10 acres.
Of land.
And then the other.
And there's not, our other issue is, there's really not 10 acres of city land available anywhere.
Sure.
So as an offset to that idea, this was the alternative in, so that's where we are. The other thing is, we're all compressed with the deadline of federal tax credits going away in December of 2016, so we didn't want to be too ambitious and completely make it fail, so we felt as though going to this first level would, would be constructive. I mean, obviously, if in the middle of next quarter, this is really rolling along, we'll, we'll look at it again, but at this moment, we've got a number of hurdles and a number of regulatory issues to work through, and we were just pleased to get four proposals and the concept to work with Delmarva saying, I think it could go, so that's where we're at at this point.
I'm curious, too, why Worcester County versus Wycomico County, is there, is one of those moving parts easier in Worcester County than Wycomico County? Is there something that we need to be looking at that's preventing us from doing that? We certainly have a lot of land in the county.
No.
The transmission or the connection or something like that, is it?
No, we, we required the site to be located on the eastern shore. We required it to be a Delmarva account. But the reason this site is the most advantageous of the, of the sites that we were exposed to is it's immediately adjacent to a high transmission line, whereas the, some of the other sites were much more remote, and we didn't think they had this, as good a connectivity capacity. So I think that's the reason this site became the one that worked. It's not an issue of the county or regulatory issues. It's, it's really trying to get a big solar field with the ability to feed it into the system where the, the infrastructure would be able to handle the electrons and neutrons that are going to go there, so.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to understand.
This, I'm taking, this is a true PPA. We have no responsibility for maintenance, for maintenance costs?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask what, what may be an aesthetic question, or may appear to be an aesthetic question, but really, it's a marketing question? Ms. Mitchell brought up the Purdue site and, and that partnership. I'm wondering if, if we can ensure that there's appropriate signage accompanying this project about our partnership with Sun Edison Standard Solar, the City of Salisbury.
Sure.
Would it also be appropriate to look at the projections? You have graphs for showing the, our cost versus the, can we get copies of those?
Yeah, is that possible to get our costs versus? Yeah, is that possible to get our costs versus the estimated?
Well, we need just a graph.
Cost savings?
Sure.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, regarding our website, the city's website, will we promote this?
I think we absolutely should. Ms. Glens, if you don't mind, taking that note, and Ms. Miller as well.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you. The next item this evening is change order number one to contract one oh nine dash one four, the Hammond Street area sidewalk improvements. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Office of Community Development to process change order number one in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents for contract one oh nine dash one four, Hammond Street area sidewalk improvements. This change order will provide additional sidewalk improvements in the noted area due to a shift in grant funding. Funds are available in the noted account. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number one, as noted above, to Metro Paving in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Is, question.
Ms. Mitchell?
Is this one of the contracts, I'm sorry, I think I may have read this, but, that we award and then do change orders as we have projects to add on to it, or is this bid specifically for this project?
This was bid specifically for this project, Hammond Street area sidewalk improvements. There was just, again, just a change in grant funding. They, let's see, do you have the department memo there?
Yes.
It's the second page? Debbie lists a little bit more information about kind of how it came to be.
It's coming back now, I just want to get the, okay, thank you.
And do we have a specific, I know we got Hammond Street area, I don't think we got the exact street or, you know, intersection where sidewalks were.
I don't think she mentioned it. Do you happen to know?
Amanda, do you know?
I don't know the exact house numbers, but this particular grant can only be used for creating new sidewalks, so this is not maintenance, these are not sidewalks that we're repairing, this is brand-new sidewalks in that area. So we can get you what house numbers we're looking at, but this is, if you go down in that Hammond Street area right now and see areas without sidewalks.
Sure.
And that is part of why it wasn't part of the citywide concrete contract, is because this is brand-new sidewalk, so it goes a little bit beyond what we typically bid.
And they're scattered sites.
Okay. Thank you.
What made that project qualify Hammond Street? How do we identify that? Because I know there were other areas, whether sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk, no sidewalk. I'm just curious.
I think that's part of the CDBG application.
Right, but I'm just wondering why, why that area, how do we get to look at other areas? Where do we, do we have a list, a running list of?
We do have a running list, and typically, when Ms. Stam gets these grants, we look at the amount of money that we have, and then we look in the low and moderate income neighborhoods and try to see, find areas where we could do a large section in that area. So it's pretty much grant by grant, we go out and drive around with her, and then prioritize areas also for walkability and the need to connect sidewalk areas.
Okay, that, yeah, I was wondering, is it close to schools, like the safe routes to schools, if they're, if it could be paired with those kinds of things? That's why I was asking, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. No?
The last item this evening is a declaration of surplus regarding parcel number zero six four nine. The city received notification of a party interested in purchasing city-owned property, an approximate ten thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight square-foot lot recorded as parcel zero six four nine, where the College Avenue Water Tower is located. The water tower is out of service, and the property is no longer needed by the Department of Public Works. At this time, the mayor, city administration, and Salisbury Public Works recommend that the city solicit offers for the property. This would be an as-is sale, with the purchaser responsible for removing the water tower. Taking into consideration the information given to me by Salisbury Public Works, the recommendation of various departments noted above, and following the guidelines of Section two point three six point zero four zero of the code, I consider this property to, I kept the word unused in there, I'm sorry, property to be unused and recommend that the city solicit offers for the sale. Therefore, I'm requesting council's approval to declare this property surplus and allow the city to take appropriate action to dispose of the property.
Okay. Questions or comments on that? I have none. So I think that's, that's it. All right. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
All right, I will now call a question, all those in favor of the award of bids as presented this evening, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And that is our agenda for the evening. Any comments for the good of the order? Okay, I will just add that our next work session meeting is April twentieth at one thirty, our next legislative session is April twenty-seventh, and in between, we will have our first budget sessions for the year, so. Right, so council, oh, I know. We're going to spend a lot of time together soon. All right. All right, with that, we're adjourned, have a lovely evening.
Thank you.